I have to know if we're missing anything for January 16, 2018, the ordinance. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. O'Hallie?
Well, we come to you in prayer right now, first and foremost, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be thankful, to you, to be thankful for the opportunity to serve this county that we live in. We ask that every decision made is guided by good thoughts and your judgment and your direction, in Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Amen. Any questions for these caller roles?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Leitner?
Here.
Mr. Walz?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Duckham?
Here.
Mr. Townkins?
Mr. Mahoney?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Oma?
Here.
Chairman Chell?
Present. Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Do they carry? We have no awards and recognition this evening. Are there any communications and petitions to come before the board? Recognize Jeff Cruz to present the packet or to the clerk.
Support.
No motion and support to receive. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, do they carry? Can the clerk, could you just pass it out?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other communications and petitions to come before the board? Seeing none at this time, special orders and public hearings, we have none at this time. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are each individual will state their name, and they have three minutes to address the board. They only may address the board under this public comment once in the opportunity, and they may not yield their time to others. Board members will not debate or answer any questions at this time. Public comment is over.
Peter Bormuth. I wanted to speak on consent agenda, item C, the Parks, Fairground Event and Conference Center, the selection of the design build firm and the project manager. I'd like to compliment our administrator, Michael Overton, and our Parks Director, Jeff Overton, who did a fine job in going through and the bidding process, using excellent criteria to select the firms. They ranked firms one through eight, and they interviewed the top three, and then I guess there was some interjection, and for some reason, the seventh firm got an interview. I recall from the Park Director's comments, they were very much second tier. So I'd like to encourage this board to approve the recommendation by the Parks Board and the Park Director, and I do want to comment, I really have to say something to Commissioner Walz about your comments that Mercer should have been given a second opportunity to bid. I really feel like that is fraud and corruption, and it is not a suggestion that a commissioner should make from the dais. And it makes me concerned about whether or not the bidding process in the Grass Lake School District was also potentially corrupted. And I also want to say that I don't believe that a corporation's donations to local charities should influence the selection of the best possible corporation to do work for the county in a bidding process like this. So I'd like you all to digest those comments, and thank you very much for your time.
Hello. I'm Brenda LaChapelle, and I am a volunteer at the Jackson County Animal Shelter, and I'm here to speak to you today about animal control officers in Jackson County, and I thank you for allowing me to make my comments. And if anyone in this room is here in support of the Jackson County Animal Control Officers, would you please raise your hand? Thank you. The state of animal welfare in our community has fallen to an all-time low. There needs to be some action taken in reference to reinstating Jackson County Animal Control Officers. It's so necessary to enforce our laws and protect our animals, our citizens, and prosecute those who are abusive and neglectful to animals. This harsh winter has brought many horrific cases into focus, and the commissioners will be receiving detailed information in reference to those cases at a later date. We are now seeing that our police officers do not have the time or the proper training to address animal conflicts. Animals in our community should not be starving and freezing, and those who are allowing this to happen need to be prosecuted. In 2014, the police officers were supposed to assume the responsibilities of animal control. Again, they don't have the proper training, they do not have the time to do this, they don't have the tools to do this. The second point is that the animal control ordinance in this community is completely delinquent. If you read the animal control ordinance, it outlines the responsibilities of animal control. This cannot be enforced. We do not have animal control, we do not have a police force that is properly trained or that has the proper tools to enforce this kind of job description. The reasons a community needs to have animal control, specifically animal control, is, for one, public safety. They respond to dangerous situations on a regular basis. They protect the community, they protect animals, and they respond to calls in reference to wildlife, domestic animals, farm animals, snakes, spiders, whatever the community needs, they respond to these things. Dog bites. Animal control officers respond to dog bites.
Three seconds.
Dog bites. All right, now you threw me. I'm almost done. So, dog bites. So, dog bites are supposed to be, the dog is supposed to be quarantined for 10 days, animal control or in the home. Animal control officers are supposed to follow up on that. There are no animal control officers to do so. Animal control officers also are the reason that the United States has eradicated rabies in most communities. Two seconds. They enforce vaccinations, they enforce state statutes. They also respond to animals in trouble that are lost, those that are injured, neglected. They respond to farm animals.
I understand.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I just want to request that we put this on the agenda for further discussion, or put me in touch with the commission or a group of commissioners that deals with animal control or the animal shelter. I just want, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Randy Iker. I'm a local attorney, and I've lived in Jackson 58 of the last 61 years. As Brenda stated, we need a full-time animal control officer. Jackson, like other communities, is in the midst of a cultural change, especially in the way we care for, protect, and interact with animals. Our citizens want animals protected in a different life than they did 10 or 20 years ago. The animal shelters euthanize animals on a weekly basis, then. Today, we only euthanize them if absolutely necessary. Our animals are cared for by veterinarian Kathy Anderson and a wonderful, loving staff, including Sandy, Marie, Heather, and Mark, a place I'm proud to say I volunteer at at least five days a week. Our animals receive necessary surgeries, medications, vaccination, lots of love and attention, and eventually a forever home. The animal control officer's training is conducted by the National Animal Care and Control Association, or the Animal Control and Humane Officer Academy. Both offer levels of academia. The state of Michigan requires 100 hours of training before a community may hire an animal control officer, and the Michigan Department of Agriculture approves training and straight state certification. The animal control officer's responsibility include overseeing animal abuse and neglect cases, and assure those cases get proper attention and investigations. Their cases include lost animals, injured animals, animals in abuse and neglect situations, plus they protect the public from animals that are dangerous. They're trained to recognize at-risk situations for animals and the public. They educate children and adults in schools and at community outings on appropriate animal care and treatment, and finally, they enforce community laws for kennels, vaccinations, licensing, and animal tax on the public. So what have our neighbors been doing in regards to community involvement and education? Two weeks ago, when the temperature was a frigid eight degrees and 10 below in Saginaw, Michigan, ABC News reported that their animal control officers spent the entire night outside in an uninsulated doghouse to demonstrate how quickly core body temperatures would drop without proper protection from the elements. This was done to educate the citizens of Saginaw on what is required to provide the proper shelter for animals during these ultra-cold, sub-zero temperatures, and to show that the effect these temps have on the pets. Without proper protection is not only dangerous, but deadly. As society has learned, education is the best way our population changes and becomes more responsible for pets we own and love. Again, I strongly encourage the commission to adopt the anti-tethering law and hire a full-time animal control officer. I know many of you have pets, and I'll bet they're spoiled, as they should be. It's clearly not in the best interest of our citizens or public policy to continue to allow our beloved pets to freeze to death in Jackson County. Thank you for your time. I look forward to your reply.
I'm a local veterinary practitioner. I'm the vice president of the Michigan Veterinary Medical Association, and I'm here today to talk to you about the animal control officers that we've had in the past and what we can have in the future. I think everyone here, and I'm very proud of the turnout that we have tonight, so thank you for coming. I'm very proud of everyone coming out and showing that they care about the animals in Jackson. I don't think that anyone here on the commission doesn't care about animals. I think that there's a lot of things that we see in the veterinary field and that our rescue people, our volunteers at the shelters see on a regular basis that's heart-wrenching. There are some people in the community that they do not have the education, the animal knowledge, or the ability to care for animals like I care for mine at home. And having eight animals in my house and only four people, I'm very much outnumbered. So from a physical standpoint, what can we do with animal control? What would be a great thing that we could do? Well, one thing, we haven't done a dog census in a really long time. We need to do one. We need to either have an animal control individual or off-duty police officers go and do a dog census. We need to know where these dogs are at, how many dogs we have. That helps us to know, you know, from our standpoint, who needs help? Where do we need to focus our efforts in Jackson County? The other would be licensure. I have not run the numbers, I don't have the ability to do that, but it would be great if someone would look back to 2012 to now, run the licensure numbers. What's the compelling interest for people to actually license their dogs? That is a source of income for the county, and that money goes back into animal control. So, for example, if you go out and you find that an animal is not vaccinated nor licensed, and you give them a warning, and you go back, and the fine is $200 for not doing that, I have a friend who in his community made $78,000 for the county just enforcing licensure. I'm not saying we should terrorize people, but that money goes back into the fund for animals. So I think we have to be conscientious of what animal control officers can do, also putting a face and a name with an individual who can help people in our community with animals. That was a great thing. We had that with our animal control officers, we knew them as veterinarians, I knew them, you know, all of my staff knew them very well, and I'm not saying we have to, you know, replicate what we had four years ago, but I think something different, something innovative, we have so many resources out there to go from, from different communities, and I think we're one of four counties in the state that doesn't have animal control right now. So please consider maybe looking at the budget and looking at maybe other sources of revenue to allow us to employ animal control officers. Thank you.
Hello. In late December of 2017, I began doing outreach to help animals in Jackson. Between December 31, 2017 to present, I have encountered and documented dogs with frozen water bowls, dogs entangled in tie-outs to the point of needing immediate medical care, no food or water for four consecutive days in a row, frostbite, and on January 1, 2018, I discovered a dog that had frozen to death in his doghouse. The temperature had been negative 10 degrees that night, he had no straw, no flaps, and no voice to speak up for him. I am asking that we enact the ordinance Detroit and many other cities have implemented that has saved many animals from unnecessary suffering and painful deaths of freezing. Some of the examples of this ordinance are tethering cannot exceed a three-hour time period, tether has to be coated steel cable and be three times the length of the dog, measuring nose to tail, tether cannot weigh more than 10% of the dog's weight, tethers must be entanglement-free, the dog may not be able to strangle themselves or wrap themselves around trees or obstacles, proper shade needs to be provided in sunny area, and proper insulated shelter must be provided against cold and damp conditions, 40 degrees Fahrenheit or below mandates insulated shelter. Dogs must have access to food and water, water dissecured to prevent spillage, cannot tether in an open area, you may not leave a dog vulnerable to attacks by people or other animals. Area for dog that is tethered for three hours or less must not be muddy, bare earth, and must be provided protection from the elements. Dogs under four months of age may not be tethered at all. Cannot tether two dogs together. Dog must be at least five feet from property lines. Why enact this new ordinance? It enhances public safety and improves lives of dogs. It was passed unanimously by Detroit City Council. When dogs are tethered for long periods of time, they can become territorial and aggressive. Even family dogs can turn if not offered proper socialization. When dogs are tethered or left alone in large, open areas, they are defenseless against attacks by people and by other animals. A fine of $500 for violations of this ordinance. Michigan Anti-Cruelty Society is working with dog owners, providing supplies, education, and the tools necessary to become a safer, more responsible community. In closing, they say that greatness of a nation can be judged by the way it treats its animals. I am certain that applies to cities as well. Thank you.
Hello. I might have a solution to the situation that we're talking about. The county sheriff office always, is real great. County Sheriff Office always does a reserve officers and stuff like that. Why don't we go ahead and talk to them maybe and see about them getting somehow funding for them to become officers for animal protection, whatever you want to call them, and see about getting them to do that kind of assignment, as long as they're reserve officers, because I mean, they don't do much other than riding the vehicles with the police anyway, and, or cadets even at that, because we do have cadets in the county sheriff office as well. So maybe we can go take that to the county sheriff's office and see like a proposal or something like that. And two, my other thing is, I love animals, don't get me wrong, my mom has a farm, horses, whatever you want to name them, peacock, whatever. The thing of it is, what about our people on the streets that are in the frigid colds because we don't have enough homeless shelters for the people out here, or for people in the county? What about those people? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is JC. You know, and I'm thinking to myself here, you guys won't even give them one, a minimum of one control officer, but yet, you're hiring 30 people. Why not dump a few of those positions and put four of them as the people that do this stuff? You guys gave yourself a 19% raise, 30% raise. Wow. I wished I was that lucky, but yet, you cannot, you cannot do the right thing. Why did you get rid of these guys? They were attached to the sheriff's department at one time, and now there's none. But yet again, you guys can take a raise, no griping there. You know, it wasn't that long ago that I sat up here and heard all of you crying about the budget. Did we miraculously get a windfall of money here someplace with all that's going on, raises and hiring 30 people here, when the last time you were talking about cutting services and laying people off? I don't understand it. Why not give these people what they need? They want to take care of the animals, let's let them take care of the animals. Let's chop four of the jobs off of somebody sitting around in a truck while the other guy's throwing asphalt down in a hole that's going to come out the first time it rains. So let's do the right thing. Why don't you guys all chip in, say 19%, say 30% to help out these people, and let's get some animal control officers in here. That'd be a good deal. No? Okay, well, everybody now knows you were elected, you can all be voted out. Thank you very much.
My name's Jeff Cruz, and I'm here tonight to discuss the addressing ordinance that the county has put into effect, which is going to affect Coronado Site Condominium Project in Leoni Township. You guys were all issued a package. If you want, I can go over that quick with you. The first, the first sheet, when I found out we were going to be readdressed in our subdivision, I was told I could appeal it. It's the appeal letter that I wrote to Scott Ames. The second communication is the communication from, the email from Scott Ames to myself. I included this because I want, I particularly wanted you to notice the date that it was sent to me and the date that the meeting was. It was sent to me January 8 at 2:39 PM, and the meeting was January 9 at 10:30 AM. I didn't even get 24-hour notice, but I made it. The third item in your package, this is what I believe was sent out to all the members of the board, because I got it from the assessor's office in Leoni Township, and it was the package. It had the agenda and our site plan, the relisting of the addresses, but you'll notice my appeal letter isn't even in this. I believe Commissioner Leitner, you said on that board, I know, I don't think it was in your package, and it was discussed at the meeting too. My appeal letter wasn't even in the board's package, which I found kind of appalling. They should have had it. The next item is the site plan, which is our condo association. It is the lots, the units, their numbers, and then the numbers circled in red are the addresses that are supposed to be in that condominium project, according that was set out to begin with, not the new numbers. The new numbers are on the next page, which, our street is only a half mile long, and they range from 100 to 900, which makes absolutely no sense to us. The next item is the letter that was sent to me by Leoni Township informing everyone, everyone that it's going to be readdressed in the subdivision, informing them what their new address will be, and we have till February 20 to do this. And then one thing is, I just wanted you to know, there's a lot of things you have to change when you do change your address, and there was just a couple items there. We agree with the address ordinance as it was intended to correct roads that were duplicates. Coronado Drive is not a duplicate in Jackson County, and we wish to remain the way we are. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Russ Jennings, lifelong resident of Jackson County and a small business owner right here in the city of Jackson. First of all, I was surprised to see all these people here, and I've always, I come to a lot of these, and it's always nice to see people here, whatever the issue is, so welcome. I enjoy listening to your guys' comments on them, but I'm here to thank, first of all, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners for their recent appointment of myself to the Region Two Planning Commission and the Jackson County Planning Commission. I look forward to serving the community in this capacity, and I thank you very much for giving me that opportunity. I'm going to go off a little bit, something that's been on my mind a while, and I know it's been brought up here at the Board of Commissioners before by another person, but considering the political climate that has changed within the city of Jackson, I fear that there could be a potential sanctuary city status issue coming up within this city. I'd like the county commissioners to seriously consider a resolution soon about maybe Jackson County being a non-sanctuary county. Now, this is serious, and I don't want to be unwelcoming, everybody on the commissioners probably knows exactly what sanctuary cities are, but I think a lot of public thinks that it's anti-immigration. All it is is, we pledge that we will enforce federal law on the current or any immigration laws, and we have the opportunity as a county commission, because we control the jail. So if the city, so if the city says with their liberal stance, becomes a sanctuary city, they have all the right to do that, but as a county, let's say someone gets arrested, we can identify them as an undocumented illegal immigrant at the sheriff's office or something like that. We can, all we have to do is follow, and that will take in federal law for in consideration. So I would like that, I'm sure it's going to come up even more and more, because I'll bet you I will get people to bring this up more and more, and I think it needs to be something that needs to be considered. Eloquent, though, we have a lot of employers that hire, hire and own, you know, immigrants own big companies and their employers, I get it, we have to be careful how we do that. We want to encourage immigration, but we have to encourage legal immigration.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nancy Oakley. I am also a longtime resident of Jackson. I'm here about the animal control officers and the anti-tethering law, and I just wanted to say one thing, because we've all, they've all talked about how we should be treating animals humanely, and as a culture, I think our county should definitely be there. I also want to point out, when you leave a dog on a leash outside, unsupervised, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you are creating an unsocialized wild animal. This isn't safe in our community, it's not safe for our children. If the dog were to get loose, or a child were to go into the backyard, the child's not going to be afraid of the dog. Most children aren't. Yet that dog might as well be a coyote or a wolf, because they have no idea how to deal with people. Dogs are pack animals, they should be socialized with other people or animals. When they're not, they're dangerous, and that's something that even if you are not an animal lover, you should be aware of. We've had a few issues like that in Jackson County in the last few years, and I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. Tony Bear. A lot of comments about animal ordinances. If you take any action on this, I'd like you to also review the Michigan's Right to Farm Act. Our horses, my other farm animals are well cared for. They're
Good evening. Tony Bear. A lot of comments about animal ordinances. If you take any action on this, I'd like you to also review the Michigan's Right to Farm Act. Horses, uh, my other farm animals are well-cared-for. They're in mud just about year-round. You've got horses, cattle, pigs, um, chickens. All of mine are fenced. No animal has ever gotten out. I've taken many of my neighbor's horses back to them. Their fences aren't as maintained as mine. My animals all have electric heated water. They are never, ever without warm water. They're never, ever without food. So, the Michigan's Right to Farm Act, I think, should be reviewed along with any ordinance that you may be considering creating or adjusting. My dogs are well-cared-for as well, and they always have heated water. They are never without water, warm water, and never without food. And I'm out on a farm, and I would not appreciate somebody just walking onto my property and saying, "We're going to do a census. Give a search warrant, want to come on the property." I support proper care and conditions for, for all animals. Keep in mind, uh, farm conditions are different than city conditions. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I would.
Hello. My name is Terry May. And one of the things that has not been brought up is blight. There is nothing that looks any worse. And I know that the animals suffer, but you drive along, and there's a dog, and it's dragging through the mud, and there's a old fence around, and you think, "I'm not living on that street." How much money can that bring? How many less dog bites is that going to bring? And I, I think that blight is a big thing that hasn't been mentioned.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. Round item 8A, approval of the minutes of the December 19th, 2017 meeting. You have a motion?
Support.
You have support? Any corrections or deletions? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertained a motion for the consent agenda?
Owe.
We have a motion and support. Any items for the vote? Seeing or hearing none? Can you post the vote?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Consent agenda passes 8-1. We now arrive at standing committee reports, affairs and agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
We have a number of appointments tonight, uh, action items. We've got several committees, including Land Bank Authority, BPW, and Department of Aging Advisory Council, that have open seats with no applicants and will hold it over till next meeting. Encourage the public to look at those and apply for them if you think you're interested. Some of them open for some time. Region Two Planning Commission is another one that's vacant, and there were no recommendations from committee nor applicants on any of those. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is one that we had no recommendations from committee, but it's a city-designated representative, and the city recommendation is Andrew Foulker. And I'll make that nomination.
Support. Have a motion and support? Any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.
Next is the emergency management. Again, same situation, no applicant nor recommendation from committee. Since that time, the city representative designated Freddie Dancy as their choice. Who I would recommend.
Support. We have a motion and support? Any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Duly carried.
And lastly, the planning commission. There were no applicants at committee meeting nor recommendations. Since that time, Commissioner Williams has agreed to take the spot, and I would make that recommendation.
Support. Any nominations from the floor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Congratulations, John. Commissioner, all of them.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services has no business to come before the board tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Duckham.
We have no business to fight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Duckham. Any unfinished business to come before the board, commissioners? Seeing or, seeing or hearing none, we move on to new business. We have item A, Finance Resolution 01-18.4, declaring the official intent to issue general obligations bound for capital improvement. Entertained a motion? We have a motion and support? Are there any questions to this? Can you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Passed unanimously? The second item that I have that is going to come up under new business, I would like to direct to the Administrator Controller's Office the issue that's occurring, uh, under public comment, as addressed by Mr. Cruz. Or I'd ask that the Board of Commissioners direct this to the Administrator Controller's Office to return in not less than 90 days with an explanation and answer to work on this issue. We have a motion? We have a support? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. The second item I'd like to bring up under new business, considering item 17C, Ms. LaChapelle brought up the fact on animal control. I would like to direct, uh, the administrator's office within the next 90 days to please report back to the Board of Commissioners on possible solutions to what's been brought forward.
I, I knew that.
We have a motion and support? Any further questions to the issue? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly clear, duly passed? Make that note that that passed unanimously. We now arrive at the second round of public comment. You have two minutes to address the board. Each individual will state their name to address the board, and you may only address the board once under public comment at this time. You may not yield your time to others, and the board members will not debate any questions.
Hi. Just another, just another couple small comments. A county the size of Jackson County should have no less than four animal control officers. And the situation that we had in Lenaway County with the 200 dogs confiscated and, um, 35 horses and those types of things. Jackson County has several, um, kennels that are licensed, and animal control officers are responsible for making sure that they're providing, um, proper care, proper sanitation, and, you know, providing medical care, those types of things. We don't want anything to happen in Jackson County like it did in Lenaway County. And again, animal control officers are a big piece of the puzzle. Thank you.
Hi, again, I'm Randy Iker. Just to concern, I had, uh, received information that Mr. Overton, um, had, I don't know, maybe it was your secretary, had made a decision that, uh, that the board was going to discuss possible additions to personnel and employment at the Jackson County Animal Shelter. I hadn't heard anything about that. I realize you don't have to respond at this point, but I would ask that, uh, that be brought up again as soon as possible. They do need help.
Yeah, I just want to tell Russ and the rest of you, anybody that's thinking about making this a city for illegals to hide out in. 1952, Harry Truman, just before he left office, had, uh, a law passed that's, uh, on the illegal immigrants. It's Immigration and Nationality Act of 1952.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, J.C.
Thank you.
So, it's the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1952. You ought to read it, because in it, it provides for anybody. Sheriff, mayor, whoever can be arrested, and you will go away for five years. This is a standing law. It's never been challenged, and if they're thinking about it in the city, maybe the mayor will be in jail. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment second round is closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lightner?
Um, one in regards to the animal control stuff. I did, I just want to publicly say that I did forward to all commissioners your letter. Part of it, I've realized, obviously, you were reading it. But anyways, to the commissioners, I forward you some information, food for thought in regards to that. Now, on to fun things. At fairgrounds, um, we have lots of things going on throughout the winter, on the weekends. Obviously, we're going to have Chili Cook Off coming up in February. We're also going to have Beer Fest coming up in March. Tickets are on sale right now for Beer Fest. They're $25 in advance, $30 at the door. We also have VIP tickets. All those funds actually go to support the premium account for the fair, which is the payouts to our kids and exhibitors, um, for their fair projects. So, it's a fun way for the adults to be involved that don't necessarily write a check to 4H. Indirectly, you end up supporting our kids. So, I just want to put that out there. All that information is on our website. We're also going to be making an announcement for one of the 2018 acts coming up, and those tickets will be going on sale, I think, at the end of the month. So, be looking for that.
Any other commissioner comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn? You have a motion and support? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.